Okay, good evening. My name is Tony Frankelangia, Chairman of the Brolin's Attorney Board of Appeal. As indicated in the agenda for this meeting, this is an in-person meeting with remote access by Zoom video and telephone conference. Remote meeting access was provided and posted on the town website for the commission members, applicants, and other interested persons to participate. For those listening, I would ask that you give your device or phone if you are able to do so, if you're able to do so, so that we don't have to get any background noise when it is time for individuals to speak. I'll ask you to unmute your phone to identify yourself. If a number of people ask to speak, we ask that you be patient until it's your turn. Two very important reminders to everyone participating. Every time you speak, please state your name and title for the record. Second, be careful not to speak over another person so that everyone who is listening can hear what is being said, and we have a clear record. For this reason, when it comes time for the board members to comment and ask questions about a particular agenda item before any action is taken. And then to go to an agenda item, our planner, Maureen Juicy, will call role as necessary when necessary. As indicated on the agenda, public hearings will be heard for each application with applicants representing the presenting their requests and responding to questions. After the public hearings have concluded, we will go into a regular meeting, which remains open to the public for listening, but no new testimony can be given, and the board will deliberate amongst ourselves. Any information that's introduced has to be done during the first part of the meeting. We can't introduce any new information during the second part of the meeting, and that's very important because if you have any new information during the second part of the meeting and you didn't share upfront in the first part of the meeting, legally, we can't use it. Also, application CBA 2022-09 266 Lower Lane has been postponed and will not be heard this evening at the applicant's request. It will be reposted for the new meeting day. The next scheduled meeting is October 25th, 2022. This meeting is being recorded, and the recording will be posted on the town's website. I'm not going to ask Maureen to take attendance by roll call. Thank you. Are there any questions? If not, please, Maureen, go ahead.
I want to start by introducing the new Assistant Town Planner, Dylan Lele. Doing the tactical meeting tonight and will participate as necessary without comments because he's talked to most of the applicants. Now, I'll call role, Tony Frankelangia. Lenny Tubb, last to be excused. Brian Matson. Martha Backsitt, Christine Mazzata.
Present.
She is. There we go. Cory Rightside. Ryan Sullivan. And Hunter Betida, alternate.
Present.
So you have two regular members that are not present and two alternates that are. They can seat those up here.
Yeah, they're all seated, but they will be seated.
You need to seat them.
Okay.
So.
We see all the alternate members. I'll make the motion to seat all the alternate members. No second?
Second.
Make discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. There's the application, CBA 2022-12 797 Frankton Avenue, F9-1, Block 28, Lot 31B. Alan Secundin. Is that right?
I think so.
Alan Secundin is requesting a modification to the existing sales of alcoholic beverages location approval to allow a restaurant with patio liquor permit for Brolin's Honor Regulation, the lemon B of the property and the CCT, CTD2 zone, speaking for the application.
So I do not believe this applicant is present. They made the application, and we haven't heard that from him after he asked. He hasn't done the mailings. I asked him to contact the office when he returned from a vacation, and we've reached out a couple more times, and we haven't heard from him. You do have time that you can open the hearing and leave it open in case he's prepared for the next meeting, or you can open, close, and deny without prejudice. We do have the timeline available for the application to stay open, so that's a an alter.
I'll just make a motion to leave the hearing open until the next meeting. Second. Discussion, please. You know, any discussion? I guess I understand we have about a month, months and 35 days.
You have 65 days to open the public hearing, which would be, you know, we're at that now. And then you have 35 days to leave the public hearing.
Just fill out for next one.
If he doesn't respond by next meeting, we're just gonna die without prejudice.
That would be the most logical alternative. Yeah.
Okay. I have a motion, made discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Maureen, take role on it.
Aye.
Hunter?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Second, I have CBA 2022-13 454 Frankton Avenue, F8-2, Block 29F, Lot 1. Simba Sarkisian?
Yes.
Okay, is requesting a variance for a front setback of 11 feet, where 25 feet is required in the R11 zone for Brolin's Honor Regulation 5B5. So that's the second floor for the existing non-conform structure, speaking for the application.
Are you trying to reach a second floor, if it's possible?
Is a second floor gonna be all bedrooms?
Yeah. Like, no, we have two bedrooms. We just leave a bathroom.
Does this house have a variance out of already, Maureen?
I did not know that I noted.
Isn't there a variance for a fence on that corner lot?
I could search that.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. We have a problem with this house. I have a problem with it because we provided a variance on the corner lot, and we gave them a variance for a fence, and the person indicated that they would keep the fence up. And not only did it not keep the fence up, the house is a disaster. And it's not your fault, okay? But the point is, is that if we're going to go back and provide approval for a second floor, then we need to do something with the fence around the property as well. And I don't know what you could do, Maureen, but I think there was a variance on this property about 15 years ago for that corner lot, and there was a variance for a fence because the person had a child, a young child. Evidently, the person did not take care of the property in the way it should have been.
So my collection on this application is that, I believe the house was in foreclosure. In my bracket, it was in foreclosure.
Yeah.
And this owner has purchased it and is seeking to do some improvements to the property and house in order to come into compliance, I believe. They may have been that owner that got a during the foreclosure process, we started an enforcement issue with the fence and the condition of the property, and then they were apprised of that situation when they started, when they did purchase the property, that they would need to come into compliance with its on-site. I don't recall if the violation was sent to you. Was it, or the violation sent to the previous owner? Can you make sure you talk into the microphone just because it's being recorded, and we have to make sure it's heard on the, by everyone that's online as well?
Any changes to the footprint of the house? Just, uh, just talking.
So. I promise I will must every.
Hold that up on the screen. It will be, there will be a change. Isn't the change to the footprint by adding the front porch all the way across the front?
Yeah, but now we have exist.
Isn't it wider? It's wider than the front.
Yes, yes, like we have existing, it's coming a bit short, but still got the local house side.
So the, the new front porch will go all the way across the front, and then the second floor will be over the existing structure.
I am familiar with the house. It's a red house. It's got the guard sticking around the front. Fence that used to be red, but the fence is now they were whatever. Oh, okay. Any other questions?
Uh, the.
So these are gonna have two and a half full basse in this house? Two upstairs and one downstairs?
Yeah, one past the bedroom.
Okay. I don't have any questions. Ryan? Hunter or Christine?
All set, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hunter?
No question.
And Cory, do you have any other? Okay.
Hold on for one minute. I want to see if I can find a variance for. The last, a last owner.
Uh, it's probably either the last owner. I'm not sure. It's, it's there. I know. Because it was a big argument here that night. Was this prior owner, Vincent Downe, or Robert Vincent Downe? One of the members of the CBA decided to call the quits after that.
Maybe it was this one, the Gano.
Plant, Chandler.
It's all, it's all.
Okay, you don't have anything else?
What else? Maureen, it's a check. I didn't know. Look for one. I don't think this one. Oaks. Farmington Avenue and Oakwood Drive, yeah?
What year was it?
CBA variance, May 26, 1998, variance, granted, Gerald Oaks 4 premises described as 454, blah, blah, blah. Nature of the variance is you leave from the R15 front yard requirement of 35 feet to one foot for an existing fence on a corner lot.
It's 24 years ago.
1998.
I remember. Too long. Okay. Well, at least I know there's a variance on the property. The variance stays with the property. Okay, but if the property is gonna be cleaned up, I think one of the stipulations that we're gonna make if we get this passed review is that that fence has gotta go right away. You know, before it hurts somebody.
I think that's actually an idea.
So you think we should take it down right away?
Okay.
I mean, I'm just saying that because that it's a real life sore.
You're proposing to remove the variance?
Not remove the variance, remove the fence. If you want to put a new fence up, okay. The fence, I don't know what kind of fence they approved. I thought they approved a wood fence or a vinyl fence. I don't think they approved a chain link fence.
It's been a wood fence.
Right. Okay, would it get over, it's like, did it get over chain? Yeah. Well, it's not even changed. I think it's the bigger thing. It's over chain.
That's all.
So I'll pick it, right?
Yeah.
But anyway, that's the story with that variance. That was a variance back in 1998, almost granted. And the variance, I'm sure stays with the property, so that's a good thing for you if you wanna keep a fence up there, but we've gotta clean it up.
Yeah.
If you can't clean it up, then just don't leave it. Don't leave it out with you without a fence. But the variance is there. You can take the fence out, you can put a new fence up. You don't have to put it up right away. I, I, I think this, because you already have a variance for the fence. Okay? So that's not an issue, but if you wanna put a vinyl fence or a four-foot fence or whatever you wanna do, it's up to you, but.
So back in 2007, it's probably a sort of five-foot-high stockade fence with a picket tops.
Right.
So. That was a 2007 view.
All right. Well, anyway, you're looking closely at the application. Does anybody, or any other additional questions? There's not? We've already closed the hearing on that?
No.
We did, right? Staff comments?
Um, we, we did not.
Any comments in favor or any comments in opposition to the application? Do you want to add anybody?
It's gonna be strictly residential, right?
This is strictly residential. This is not.
Anyone who's speaking is to come.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Please come out and sign in.
Sign in. Speaking to the speaker, please.
I didn't have a question because it's already in the application. It's a single family as well. But go ahead. Please sign up, sign in with the station name.
Robert. 23 Oakwood Drive.
Robert.
Just wanna know if that's just gonna be residential.
Yeah, it was a I think, I, I saw it somewhere near as I read it. It was a, a single family application. Maureen, could you help?
So the, the zone is R11, which is a single-family residential zone, and so the uses allowed is R11 zone or what is allowed, what can be allowed at the property. So there, you know, there are certain types of uses that are not subject to zoning, but they're, you know, they're allowed in the zone.
Okay.
So it's whatever else, anyone else in the neighborhood could have for a single-family residential site.
Yes.
Yeah, just put your, you print your name so that our secretary, she types.
Okay.
Type it in. Thank you.
Let's leave it up here. Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
I, I saw it somewhere. I don't know where I saw it.
What?
That is a single-family lot.
I, we probably wrote it in the staff report.
Oh, okay.
Is to remain a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling. The house is proposed to remain a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling. I believe there are three bedrooms currently, and it's just a reconfiguration to still have three bedrooms, but it adds the second story to the house, as well as the front porch and repairing the back porch. The back porch is also in the front yard, it's set back along Oakwood, so if you, you know, you need the variance or all the back.
That's it.
And I'm sorry, in the staff report, when I first typed it, I wrote, like, it's straight, and I should have read Oakwood for anyone who saw a digital copy that didn't get the corrected copy.
The house is proposed to remain a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling. I know, I know I read it, but I just, you know. Okay. Thank you, sir. Staff comments? You got opposition? Comments in favor, comments in opposed? Any other comments? Make a motion to close the hearing on the application. One second. What a motion made. Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Maureen, you take role.
Aye.
We don't need to do that. Rose, the hearing.
Okay.
It's not, it's when we get confusing about or.
Well, I heard aye from Christine, and I heard aye from Hunter. Okay. All right, that's closed. Thank you, sir. CBA 2022-14 71 Lincoln Street, F2-3, Block 6, Lot 17. Michael Schweitzer is requesting a variance for a rear setback of 31 feet, where 40 feet is required in the R15 zone for Brolin's Honor Reg 5A10, or proposed 28-foot-by-20-foot addition, speaking for the application.
Yes.
Good evening. My name's Mike Schweitzer, and my wife is not here. We're the property owners, and we found our forever house many years ago, and it's 71 Lincoln Street. And what we're looking to do is to fix a structure that's in the rear. The current structure roof is rotting, and it's starting to become an eyesore. This is an odd lot. When we purchased the property, the lot was, we purchased it from a real estate company that I think they flipped the house. And part of flipping the house was, it's my understanding, they, they split the rear lot and built another house. So I have this kind of odd lot on a corner. And what I'm looking for is this, this variance fix what's there right now.
And you're putting a an addition up to the the back of it. I mean, you're adding to that addition after the back, or fixing that addition after the back.
Correct.
Where the garage is.
Yeah, correct. If you're looking at the house from a street, it would be on the left-hand side in the rear of the lot.
I guess this was pretty zonied. How old is the house?
I believe it was, um, built in 1949.
I just looked at this before. I had to fix in the existing roof, your proposed addition spans area. Yeah, this, this, this is the area you're talking about. Family room, kitchen, mudroom. The kitchen is existing.
Correct.
So you're not, okay, yeah.
Yeah, just the one kitchen. That's, yeah.
I think that, I think, I, I think when I first looked at this, I got a little confused because I wasn't sure whether you were building in law corners. But I don't think you were. I think what I.
So, so if you look at the, the floor plan up on the screen right now, which is the floor plan in your package.
Right, yeah, yeah.
The garage, through the applicant service correcting, but the garage is existing, as is the extension to the left, to the right, is where the house goes off to the right and continues. And the family room addition to the rear, to the, the top of the page, is the new addition that requires the, a variance of the rear yard. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. I, I got confused. That's actually really the galley kitchen, just what it is, to call it probably.
I'm not sure what the kitchens call, but it's.
Yeah, it's usually, well, like, galley kitchens, it's like in the hallway, it's like, I think, two areas.
Yeah, that's exactly what it is.
But that's exactly what it is. I, I was confused when I saw that because I thought there was a kitchen in the other part of the house. I didn't see the other part of the house, and that's what, what confused me. But so long as this is a single family, it's not being used for any kind of in one quarter or anything like that. I don't have an issue with that.
Correct. No in-law corners, I can promise you that.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Schweitzer, the, just by sight on this copy here, it looks like you could actually stay compliant without a variance if you shortened the depth of the addition in order to fix that back roof piece. Would that be fair?
That's natural, same.
Just by sight, it looks like it would be, you would only have about 10 feet over 20 you're proposing.
If I may, what we wanted to do was just add a little bit because the house has lots of small little rooms in it, like how many houses that were built in that era. So this would be a slightly, you know, larger room for the family.
Yeah, I just note that I think that there's no real encroachment is used to your rear lot 17A. That's the lot that must have been split off with 17 and 17A.
In the rear is the lot that was split off, but it's my understanding before I moved in, it was all kind of wooded area, where they split it off and cut the trees down. That's why a lot of times I go live in 17, 17A.
Good point. It's 10 feet.
We're pulling up on the screen now the last split.
Right, that, there is. What is that? Where's, where's this? I've never heard this term recently.
So if a lot has not been subject to a okay, this version of Zoom doesn't wanna let them rotate the screen. However, it is, it's the same lot regardless. Lots are subject to subdivision regulations. Our subdivision regulations were enacted in 1949, so. Lots are subject to subdivision regulations, our subdivision regulations were enacted in nineteen forty-nine, so any lot that wasn't split after nineteen forty-nine. The same as it was at that time is lot one, three split. My common way to explain it to most applicants is, you got your farm, your oldest son can get a lot, everybody else you have to go through the subdivision process for, for the rest of your family. To get additional lots, so that first lot is the free cut, this area of town was divided prior to. The subdivision regulations, so this lot was larger, and then in nineteen. It's twenty twelve. The previous owner split the lot and created. Had that side, the east side of the lot, remain the rear lot, the, the rear yard. And that's how they placed the property line to make, to be compliant with the.
But you have to have a same amount of square footage to meet the zoning requirements, right?
Right, they would, they would have to meet the zoning requirements of the R.
And they do, people.
Fifteen zone, thank you.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
So this is the map that, what's shown on the screen now is the map that was filed in twenty twelve by one of the previous owners, that split this lot. And created the configuration we see here, so that they can sell lots of parts.
Any further questions? I don't.
All set, thank you.
No questions on my end.
Staff comments?
I'm thinking I explained. Well, I guess in my staff report, you'll see the, it is a corner lot. The two front yards are required, and a rear yard is required by the regulations, and therefore that's the way the configuration came up with it at the time. And you did find the, you know, all the distances at, at the time for the free split.
Any, any comments in favor of the application, comments of opposition to the application? I'll make a motion to close the area on the application, second. The motion made, second, is any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
I just suggested you re-announce that have the application twenty twenty-two oh nine as.
Application twenty twenty-two dash oh nine, the last one on the agenda, Lower Lane, map two sixty-six, Lower Lane, map fifteen-two, block ninety-one. Lot seventy, this application is postponed until the October twenty fifth meeting of the CBA. At which point it will be heard.
Actually, we're in discussion with the attorney.
Yeah.
We're postponing it and we'll repost it in order to ensure that they have the five first present that they requested at the, when the public. Beginning of the public hearing, they requested they have five first present to be heard and go through the process, so. The next meeting is October twenty-fifth, we'll try to schedule it for that, but if there's an issue, they did grant the extension so that we could.
Okay.
Repost it for a meeting that works.
There was a voting issue, they wanted to make sure they had five, not four.
Yes, yes, so we want to make sure that when it's continued, we have the five as well, it will be reposted.
As far as the. As far as the minutes for the special meeting. I attempted to postpone approval of this because. Lenny. Ashley, Lenny, Cory, everybody was here. Ryan was seated, Otto was here, was, that's a meeting, Cory was here, the only person that was not here was Lenny. That's not here tonight, so I, I mean, we can approve these minutes if you'd like. Right, well, does anybody have any question on these minutes, this is the special meeting, this is for July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. I glanced at it before I came, but I didn't see anything, I thought it was, was pretty good, but there was a lot of. Well, this submitted by Kristen.
Kristen checked the minutes and that's, I added it.
Okay. I saw that, I think, I saw that. Is everybody okay, I think? Motion to approve these minutes. Actually, July first, July nineteenth is the first one. And then June. June twenty-eighth is the, that was a sure one. Was it?
Yeah, that was the first one, we heard two sixty-six, what were they?
Oh, it was the first time we heard. Why don't we do both, June and July?
You, you do have to go separately?
Okay. Okay, let's go, let's do July twenty-eighth, based on what, right? June twenty eighth, based on what, right, it's not a school, June twenty eighth, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for June twenty eighth, July twenty-two.
Second.
Made second, any comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And then I'll make a motion to approve the July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion made second, and any comments on that? All in favor?
Aye.
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 For that.
Can you repeat the first and the second for the June twenty eighth?
Tony made both. Cory was seconded.
Was it Tony not at June?
He was here.
You were there for June.
No, he was, you're right, he was.
No, I wasn't here, I wasn't here.
He can't make that one.
I can't make the motion.
You try that one again?
June twenty eighth meeting. And I have a motion, good, good.
You wait for one of us, I'll make a motion to approve the June twenty eighth minutes.
I second. A motion made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Aye.
You. I was the universal.
This is the first.
Right, I was the first one. It's not like you missed anything at all, I'm sure with this. Okay, regular meeting. Did we? Did we have a. We postponed the first item, CBA twenty twenty-two. There's twelve, seven, ninety-seven, front, and avenue. I saw somebody walk in, I don't know if they did after that. Oh, okay, all right, okay. Okay, that's all right, then, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't lose somebody up. You know, step over or whatever, okay, so that, ZBA twenty twenty-two dash twelve, seven ninety-seven, front, and avenue, postponed till October. ZBA twenty twenty-two dash thirteen, four sixty-four, front, and avenue. Map eight dash two, block twenty-nine F, lot one, Simba. Simba?
Sam, Sam Sarkisian.
Okay, Sam Sarkisian is requesting a variance for a front setback of eleven feet with twenty-five feet is required down in the zone. For Brooklyn zoning regulation five B five, to, had a second floor to an existing non-conforming structure. I'll make a motion to approve this application, provided that that fence is taken down immediately and that, you know, the structure is worth that. Within the next couple of months, so that we eliminate. Was an existing, was an existing eyesore for quite a while. And I'm, I'm thinking, I, I'm, I'm just thinking that a lot here, that two or three months is probably enough time to be able to maybe clean the place up a little bit. Does anybody have any, any comments about that, I second the motion. Well, you're second, okay, then we'll have a discussion about that. But to my.
No, I agree, I don't know if we technically put that in the, it's already there, it's to have a fence, take it, repair it, can't work.
Oh.
Pull it back up.
No, 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 I don't want to where to put it back up, but the fence, the fence and the building are, are not only a eyesore, but they're also. If, if there's kids running around the area and that fence is ready to fall over, I think it's a, it's a safety hazard, and I'm just saying that, that, that fence already appeared. But it ought to be removed, because it's not repairable, from what I can see. The fence is pretty much three quarters gone. It was put back up, and then it fell back down, and put back up, fell back down, and I'm afraid that if kids go around that neighborhood and go walking around, tries the fence, and it falls on them, that, that. We're gonna have another series of issues on our hands, and I may be a little bit over careful, but I, I just, you know, think that, that, I do.
You drive that recently?
Yeah.
I haven't noticed it, so. All I can see is on Google.
Yeah, I, I, well, I've seen it a couple of times, I've actually, actually walked the property. And you got yourself a lot of work, I mean, trying to move on to the house, we got torches, let's shop, in fact, porch, you know, it's all gone, but anyways. It is a little bit of a hazard area, but. I think that. Some of the safety stuff should be taken care of ahead of time. With the approval of, of the. Assuming that this is approved, I mean, I just made a motion to approve it, but, you know, I have a couple of stipulations. With regards to cleaning up the place so it doesn't become a safety problem for. People going around.
I feel like it's appropriate to stipulate, I'm sure, but the technicalities of that removal or replacement or repair. At a minimum repair optimally to remove, if there's a safety issue, as you said.
Or we're leaving a sentence maybe in my head, oh, I'm.
Well, what do you guys?
I think to the. If you'd allow it to. Be brought into a safe condition within the time period that you're requesting, you know, you said, two months, I don't know, or something like that. To us, to the satisfaction of staff for the safe condition.
That sounds good, yeah.
Because I certainly doubt that they could do their construction in that tight a period of time, so the property will remain a construction site for a period of time.
Several months.
Yeah, and that would, you know, they can have the building permit off, o- open for as long as the building permit's allowed to be opened, so, you know. Can't really make it less than code allows it to be, but we can monitor and work with that to make sure it's into a safe condition.
Good, sounds good.
Enter motion perhaps?
Wonder if I made a motion that, make the motion to approve it with a stipulation that everything is done. And that safety standards are already here too, and that the town. Be consulted with any work that's going to be done in terms of making sure that the fence and the structure are safe, that people aren't going to get. For five, there are a lot of kids in that neighborhood, white kids. It's been satisfactory, I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Good luck.
Hey, CBA twenty twenty-two dash fourteen, seventy-one Lincoln Street, map two dash three, block six, lot seventeen. Michael Schweitzer is requesting a variance for a rear setback of thirty-one feet or forty feet is required in the R fifteen zone for Brooklyn zoning regulation five eight ten. For a proposed twenty-eight foot by twenty foot addition. Have a motion to approve this?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. Any discussion?
Just a little recent on the hardship here, I know our laws are not supposed to be. The basis of hardship. Stretching maybe for the free split, and that's why I made the comment about no encroachment on the split rear yard. Of where there is potential to stay compliant without a variance. I think we should. We should note that. I'm in favor based on the fact that it does not appear to encroach. I'm always cognizant about precedent on hardship.
Exactly, and I hear you, I, I, I think that the. I, the owner of lot seventeen, I'm sure was notified.
The body property notices went out.
Yeah, the body property notices went out, and everything, and it's an empty, there's plenty of space back there, but. I, I'm thinking that a temporary additional would probably be a deal breaker in terms of not being able to, that's what family owners probably. And nowadays, you're going to even sort of TV in there. Probably a. Too small of a room. Probably twenty-eight, it'd probably be, you know, long and all, similar to the middle part of the house, so I, I, I. I understand what you're saying, and I, I think it's, I. Looked at the property in the back, it looked like this was a good distance. So maybe it, you know, an extra ten feet.
Right, any comments?
Any more comments, Murray, I've got Murray, Christine.
Thank.
After.
Nothing from me.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, that's an answer, that's approved. We love that, thank you. Again, two twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, is on nine dash, twenty twenty-two dash on nine, two sixty-six, Lower Lane is going through October. October twenty-fifth meeting, is it, Marty?
We have, the next meeting is October twenty.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn at seven fifty-six.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks on record.
All right.
Nine oh six.
The record. Good luck with your additions, a lot of work.